It is noon, but we will continue to wait until Mr. Kuntz has joined us.
I just re-forwarded the link to Bart, just in case.
Thank you.
In the chambers, we're going to test to make sure that they can hear us on live, on stream live. So I'm just talking to make sure that we can confirm that we are in fact talking. Once they notify me that they can in fact hear us online, then we'll know that we're being heard online. Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three. They can hear us online and we're being livestreamed as well for the hearing officer's information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bart says, Bart just texted me back and it says he's waiting to be admitted. I'm not showing that.
One second. That's it. That would be with us in the chambers. One moment. We'll get him at it.
He's trying again.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great.
Mr. Kuntz, so let's go ahead. Good afternoon. My name is Craig Call. I'm the Grand County Land Use Hearing Officer, and we are convened today on a Thursday, June 27, 2024, to consider an appeal involving the Kane Springs Improvement District, which who is, which is applying for a conditional use permit. The conditional use was denied by the county commission and is being heard here again. For the record, let's have those that are representing the parties here to introduce themselves. Mr. Barrett?
Bruce Baird, counsel for the appellant.
Thank you.
And yes, Bart Kuntz appearing on behalf of Appleye, Grand County.
All right. Thank you.
Dishful, Stephen Stocks appearing on behalf of the county.
Thank you. So the, the parties have talked about setting this time and date to discuss procedures. It, I'm not sure we'd get into any substance, but we've noticed it as a public meeting because under the Grand County ordinance, I'm, I'm a public body. So I am subject to the Open Meetings Act, and that means we of course provide notice and do our business in public. So the, the first thing I think we probably ought to address is the role of the public in this matter. Just a way of background, I have been the Grand County Hearing Officer for some time. There was an issue that came earlier this year that involved the appeal of a conditional use. It was considered de novo, and in that process, someone made a motion to intervene and appear. That was not handled formally because the parties to the dispute, the property owner and the county agreed that the public would have the opportunity to participate. And so we didn't have to deal with the issue of the intervention, and there was a larger conversation. In this case, however, we have not had that conversation before. I did receive two communications this morning, which I have not read from third parties. And I, I noted that Mr. Stocks appropriately forwarded both of those communications to the other, to counsel for the parties here. And I guess I'd like to, I mean, basically, the county code does not provide for a public hearing and public input on a conditional use. So I'm interested in hearing the, the opinion of the parties. Let me just say to those of the public that may be interested or involved here, this is a matter of some significance because of recent rulings by the Utah Supreme Court, and it may be that if I don't follow the rules here precisely, that it might be, it might be counter to the code and ordinances. It may risk that some allegation of unfairness and impropriety might be offered that might undermine the validity of any decision that comes from it. So let me ask Mr. Baird to respond first to that issue.
First, thank you, Mr. Hall. Second, thank you, Stephen, for forwarding those. Just to let you know, Mr. Hall, some of the, two of the things were, they were somewhat different. One of them was a completely different issue, actually, not this issue, and one of them was related to this issue from the public. We object to any public participation. We don't believe it is appropriate. We certainly understand that this is a public meeting, and we would expect nothing less than to have it in a public meeting. But as you do, we understand the distinction between a public meeting and a public hearing. We don't believe it is appropriate in any way to have the public, whether they try to intervene or not, speak on the very limited issues on the appeal. They had an option, an opportunity to speak and did repeatedly at the hearings in front of the county commission. And I think that's even more so once we get to the, the issue of today, which is what actually are we reviewing, whether it's de novo, et cetera. So we would object to public participation or your consideration in any way of public input on this.
Thank you. Mr. Kuntz, any thoughts?
Yes, first of all, I just want to note that I, I think I only received one of those communications from the Development Watch this morning. I don't know of the other one. But as a general rule, the county does not oppose a public comment during public hearings, oh, sorry, public meetings. Generally, it takes public comment during public meetings, and if this is a de novo hearing, the county would not object to public comment being given during the public meeting.
Thank you. The second comment was from Liz Thomas, and I think Mr. Stocks forwarded Liz Thomas's and attached the Development Watch documents together.
Oh, so it's the email with the attached letter?
Right.
Yes, I received those.
There's the body of the email and then the attached letter.
Okay, I just considered that one item. Thank you.
And that's why I pointed out that the second, the attachment is actually relating to a completely different issue.
So basically, I'm pretty well bound by their writing, the wording of the ordinance. The county council at the time in 1921 specifically eliminated public hearings and an amendment to the land use code. So therefore, it would, in my mind, risk prejudicing the interests of the appellant here to not comply with the county's intention and its ordinance as written, understanding, of course, this has not been the actual practice in the county. But let me offer some perspective or thought. We're only discussing procedures here. We're not getting into the substance of this. And if anyone has input they'd like to share on either side, there's no, there's nothing in the law that prohibits you from contacting the parties and offering your assistance or help or thoughts. So those who would prefer that this appeal fail may have the opportunity to connect with Mr. Stocks, the county attorney, or Mr. Kuntz. And those who wish to see it succeed may have some contact with Mr. Baird. And, and these gentlemen who are arguing the matter can take into account the thoughts, the helps, the comments, or whatever support the individual entities, you know, individual members of the public or third parties wish to offer. The Supreme Court in a case decided in '22 made it very difficult for third parties to establish standing and due process rights in these cases. So again, with apologies for the ongoing evolution of the land use process in Utah, I'd offer those perhaps helpful comments, thinking that there is a way to provide some input, but it wouldn't be directly to me. My job is to only communicate with the parties and to only consider items that are proposed, that are admitted into the record. If, if a member of the, if one of the parties wants to submit documents provided by others and considers it appropriate to do so, they can certainly do so. And then I can review it, determine whether I can think it's relevant or not. I'm sorry for the, like the explanation. Any other thoughts? I'm sorry, I didn't turn to you, Mr. Stocks, to see if you had additional comments before I gave the long response.
No, Mr. Call, that's perfectly fine. I would just encourage the public, if they would like to reach out and contact the county, to contact the county attorney's office, myself or Ms. Hoffine in my office, we would be best served to receive those documents and that information, and then we can, of course, provide them to both Mr. Kuntz and both parties if we would like to submit them. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm just, and I'm gonna say it before you do, Mr. Baird. That is, all I consider is, all I can consider is substantial evidence in the record of the matter. And substantial evidence, of course, has to be independent and credible, expert, and based on the issues before me. Excuse me, Mr. Baird, go ahead.
I was just gonna add, Mr. Hall, that your citation to, I've assumed, McKittrick was just buttressed literally two weeks ago tomorrow by the Supreme Court in the hideout and ERTA cases, both of which were standing cases in a annexation context, but the law was applied similarly. So you, I believe you're 100% correct, and we appreciate your consideration on that.
Thanks. I was citing the Monticello case. That's my.
Oh, you're citing Monticello? Yeah, okay.
So the, you know, right on the border here, the next county, it's San Juan County, was the defendant there and Northern Monticello Alliance involving wind turbines outside of Monticello. So for what it's worth to those who are tolerant to all the chatter going on here, that's the perspective that I was referring to. So, Mr. Baird, you bear the burden here and have the duty to proceed. How do you want us to use this time? What are we to accomplish today?
Well, I believe we're simply talking about the emails that I exchanged with you regarding the, the standard of review and how we're going to proceed in the future. I have my email of June 6th and, and Mr. Kuntz's email of June 6th, essentially, I think, concurring in my email. And then I have your decision on the screen, also dated the 6th, talking about where we go on this in terms of how we proceed. And I, I won't add much to what I put in my letter, I, my email, I don't believe, because as we've discussed, the statute is clear, the state code is very clear, that, that it's de novo review on the facts. But I believe it's also clear, under 1727A 7011A, sub 2, that you are the arbiter of the interpretation of the land use ordinance. And based on the reason that the county just made its decision to deny the CUP, which was simply on the application of 1727A 406 and determining, in the county's opinion, that we couldn't build the project because it didn't comply with the general plan, we think this is a purely legal issue. It is essentially an interpretation issue only, and we don't see any facts in dispute. There were no, there was no decision by the county in any way on any of the classic conditional use conditions. This was simply a binary choice, as literally phrased as a binary choice, by a county commissioner that says they could not approve it because allegedly the plan did not comply with the, sorry, our CUP did not comply with the county's general plan. We think that's a straight legal issue. It's not subject to any facts, and we are prepared to move forward on that at a time after, I'm assuming that Mr. Kuntz would like some time to respond to a, a brief, and Mr. Stocks as well, explaining why they think that it, that they were correct to begin with. And then we would do a reply brief, and we'd essentially treat this as an interpretation, which is, as you know, a quite common role for a hearing officer, is to do an interpretation. So we don't think it's more of a, of a conditions issue. It's an interpretation issue. And I believe, based on Mr. Kuntz's response to point one of my email of the 6th, that, that as it sits now, it's a, it's purely a legal issue.
Thanks. By the way, I, there are a couple of facts. I don't know where the property is. I noted in your, in the material you submitted, you provided some maps, but I don't know where the property is.
Well, okay, I think we can, I think that Mr., if, if, and that's, if that's the case, then I think we could, Mr. Kuntz and I could certainly agree to transmit, as I expected to do, transmit the record to you, which would show our application, our supporting materials, the staff report. And in that regard, all those, all those questions that you need would be in the materials. I think this is a record review, legal interpretation, and not anything else. And we're happy to give you the record, and that answers, I think, every question.
Meh.
Yes, please. I'm sorry. I was just intervening and trying to simplify.
Sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Kuntz.
And I just, I mean, I think it will, will clear up a lot of things. The county intends to defend the decision made by the county commission and its findings and evidence, and rely on the same staff report and staff recommendation that was presented to the county commission. And so we intend to present, I think you requested the staff recommendation, and we intend to present that to you with its attachments, as well as the, of course, the minutes and the decision letter from the county. We have also prepared the record. It is de novo, but under the ordinance, the way I read it anyway, we still have to tender the record. So we are preparing to do that and submitting that as well. And that should, I believe, answer your questions. And I think Mr. Baird is correct in his representation, that at least the county intends to defend that decision, which was based on an interpretation. I will quibble a little bit with his representation that it's just 406. It's, it's 406, but similarly, and it's, it's probably not a substantive difference, but it also is one of the elements of consideration for a conditional use permit under the county's ordinance to consider consistency with the general plan as well. So it plays a role both under 406 and under the county's ordinances for the, the CUP analysis.
And, and as usual, Mr. Call, I would agree almost completely with Mr. Kuntz, because we rarely ever disagree, although we're always on the, well, not always on the opposite side, but usually on the opposite side. But I, I don't, I don't think Bart said anything that I would disagree with.
Thank you. By the way, for those who may have some interest, I'm not a Grand County resident. I have been doing this for Grand County for a number of years, and for a dozen or so other jurisdictions in the state. I have no information about this matter, except what's been communicated to me from the county and from Mr. Baird. And that's part of the process of, of being impartial, is simply acting like a district court judge would act, and not having a lot of outside conversations or investigations into the, the issues surrounding a given dispute. And that's done to provide fairness to the parties and make sure everybody has a chance to respond to any evidence that may be considered in resolving the issue. That said, let me just leave open a factual question, if I may. It is a conditional use permit. If, if a conditional use permit is issued, conditions are normally attached. That involves some kind of findings about what the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use may be. But we may not get there. I don't know, depending on the arguments on the legal questions. So if the parties want to stipulate to handle the legal questions and leave the door slightly open to factual reviews, that would make me the most comfortable. Mr. Baird?
Let me, let me explain, see how that works, Mr. Hall. The staff, in this case, actually did a very thorough staff report about what would classically be mitigating conditions of reasonably anticipated detrimental effects. And the staff concluded that all of the classic conditional use conditions could be met by certain conditions that the staff was proposing and that we would agree to their imposition. There was, as you read the record, literally no determination, I, I don't, I don't want to overstate it. I don't want to argue the case. But we believe that the classic conditional use conditions were dealt with by the staff, and we are willing to comply with all of the classic conditional use conditions recommended by the staff, and none of the county commissioners cited any additional conditions in denying the conditional use application. They denied it based on 406, and as Mr. Kuntz added, the county's code requirement of, of consistency with the general plan. So we believe that the conditions are done.
Thank you.
Mr. Call, yes, the, the conditions that were recommended by staff, I believe that Mr. Baird's client would stipulate to those if indeed the county's decision was reversed and conditions were imposed. And if that ends up being the case, those would be the conditions that the county would want imposed on the permit, as recommended by staff. If, if, if you want to leave the door, as you mentioned, a little bit of jar to do some, some factual, to, to receive some factual evidence, and you're not satisfied with, with those conditions, the county has no objection to that.
Well, I'm blind, blind, that's all. I haven't seen the staff report, so I'll look forward to that. Mr. Stocks?
Additionally, I think keeping the doorjar would be helpful, especially in light of the hearing officer's training and experiencing these matters. I think if the hearing officer sees additional information that he would like to request, I think it would be appropriate to keep those conditions ajar as well.
Thanks. Okay, well, it looks like all we need to do from here is decide the timeframe we're going to proceed with. Do you want a deadline to submit the record to me, make sure everybody has the same documents, and then one to provide a applicant's brief, and then a county response, and then an applicant's reply? Is that the process we're looking at?
I think so.
If, yes, I think so as well. We can get the record and the, the staff recommendation to you by end of business tomorrow.
And I, I don't know if I will add much to my appeal letter, but I would like maybe a couple of weeks to determine whether I want to add anything. And we may add some record citations to it. But I, I don't anticipate adding too much. So if, if perhaps, let's see, we've got a holiday coming up next week. If perhaps I could have until, say, the, oh, I don't know, 17th of July to file any supplement that I might have before then?
All right. Then how long will you need, Mr. Kuntz, to respond?
Um, let me just check my calendar quick, if you'll bear with me.
Certainly.
And, and obviously, as you know, Mr. Hall, Mr. Kuntz and I work cooperatively and professionally on this, as we always have, and we know, we appreciate you doing the same thing. So we will exchange all reciprocal courtesies above and beyond the rules of civility and professionalism.
Definitely. Um, I would, I would like, with that caveat, I would like through, if you can give me a little more than two weeks, through Friday, August 2nd, there is a, a holiday in between there, so I might be requesting some additional time, depending on how my time is available during that period.
Works for me, Your Honor.
Don't, don't Your Honor me, though.
I know. I, it's, you know, I, I was just about to apologize for wearing a non-suit, and then I realized I just said "Your Honor," and I just screwed it up both ways.
That could be prejudicial, Mr. Baird.
You and I have known each other for so long, and Mr. Kuntz and I have known each other for so long, the temptation to say Bart and Craig is gonna be probably, I'll fail that more than once. I've already failed once with Bart.
Just stay in the guidelines, that's all. So how long after the Kuntz response do you want to file your reply?
You said the second, Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
Give me two weeks, the 16th of August.
Then when do you want to set the hearing?
Um, let me give you the times that don't work, if I might. And as you may know, I'm semi-retired, and I travel a lot. I am out of the country from the 7th of September through the 20, through the, yeah, sorry, through, let me get the dates, through the 16th of September. So I am, I am free essentially between the night, right, right now, I'm free pretty much between the 19th of August, the week of the 19th of August is essentially free, the week of the 26th of August is essentially free, as is the front part of the Labor Day weekend, 3, 4, 5, and 6. I'm, I'm amenable to work with pretty much anyone's schedule in that, in those time blocks. I assume we're gonna do this by, by Zoom as opposed to traipsing down to Moab so that we can, Bart and I can save our clients both a lot of money.
What's your schedule, Mr. Kuntz? The last half of August, I guess, sounds like the best. The, the code does ask us to move within a reasonable timeframe here.
Yes, and, and unfortunately, I do have some, I will be out of town some of those dates as well. And I'm also a little concerned about scheduling a hearing for that time in case there are some extensions requested on the, because then that would cut into it significantly if we have a hearing come up. I think that, Mr. Call, you will want to probably have some time to look over the, the briefing before the hearing. So I'm wondering if September would be best to schedule.
It's not like the last half of September, then?
Or I'm good 3, 4, 5, and 6. I think that's up to Mr. Kuntz, but I think 3, 4, 5, and 6 would give us windows for movement on the briefs and time for you to read it. But I'm also amenable to the 16th, 17th, 18th, 19th, 20th of, well, maybe not the 16th, because I don't get jet lag, but I do just get back in the country on the 15th. So 17, 18, 19, 20, I'm good.
Mr. Kuntz?
I can do 17, 18, 19, 20. I think that would probably be best.
Mr. Stocks?
I would have a preference for the 18th and 19th, especially since the 17th is the commission meeting.
Works for me.
Me too. Me too.
Now it's up to you, Mr. Hall, you pick it.
So let's do the 18th. Any thoughts about how long we should allow for this? How much time it might take?
I, I'll be honest, I don't think it's gonna take all that long, frankly. And I, I've dealt with Mr. Kins, Mr. Kins and I have worked together enough before. I know he doesn't just waste his time blathering on about the stuff, and he makes his points quickly. I try to do the same thing. So I, I can't possibly see how it could go longer than two hours and reasonably more like one and a half or one, but I'm, I'm amenable to listening to whatever Mr. Kins says and Mr. Stock says.
I think two hours will be more than enough.
Mr. Stocks?
I would agree.
So do you want morning or afternoon, 10:00 AM or 2:00 PM?
10:00 AM. It's also the, the week of the UPC conference, so I prefer the morning if possible.
All right.
10:00 AM is fine with me.
So September 18th at 10:00 AM would be a hearing. So here's what I think I wrote down here. The record will be delivered electronically via email to the parties by the end of business, June 28th. The brief from the water, from the district, the service district, would be filed electronically on or before the end of business, July 17th. The county would respond to that by the end of business, August 2nd. A reply would then be due August 16th by the end of business. And then 33 days later, we'll have a hearing at 10:00 AM on August, on September 18th, which will be via Zoom. Did I get that right?
Sounded right to me.
Yeah, me too.
Mr. Call, it sounds correct. I had one question if we'd like to add, add an additional date after the initial June 28th record, date of delivery, if we could have a response or any objection to the record, perhaps a week after that by the district so that we can confirm that the record meets the whole party's agreement. That way, we wouldn't have that issue later on.
So wise suggestion. Mr. Baird?
I was just about to use the word wise as well, Mr. Call.
So would that be July 5th?
That would be seven days, yes, Mr. Call.
All right, I'll throw that in, too. Is there anything else we need to discuss while we're here?
I, I guess my only question would be, am I okay not wearing a suit and a tie on the next hearing?
Well, I, I don't think your attire will affect my decision. I don't, I don't mean to, I'm relatively open to all kinds of personal accommodations, so it doesn't offend me if you don't wear a suit and tie.
That's the only thing I cared about. I just never want to offend the, the hearing officer.
Well, some of us need to dress this way for, to protect the illusion of competence. Others basically don't have to worry about that, so.
Mr. Call?
Yes, Mr. Stocks?
On the September 18th, we were anticipating the same arrangement with a physical location available for the public to join, but then the parties all attending virtually. Is that correct?
Yes, that'd be fine. And that is compliant with the government record, excuse me, the Government of Public Meetings Act, as I understand it.
That's our position as well.
And ours as well.
Thank you. Well, I think we have concluded what we needed to do today and look forward to the information that will be provided and a thorough and fair review. It's 12:34 PM, and I'll close the meeting at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. See y'all again later.